Hey Dawn, I'm assuming you can't hear anything.
John, can you hear us? And Colton, can you hear us?
I don't think they can hear us still.
I can hear you now.
I hear you now.
Great, sorry about the delay. Dawn, are you able to hear us?
Yes.
Perfect. I don't know, I'll just bring everybody up to speed. We are, our Chair and our Vice Chair not present tonight. So according to Robert's rules, the, the members present, we do have a forum, they would have to agree to nominate a temporary Chair. Brian has nominated Marlene as the temporary Chair for tonight's meeting. And so we would just need to, and it's been seconded in by Carl, and now we're just voting to approve Marlene as the temporary Chair for today's meeting. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dawn nodded her head. Colton, and do you approve?
We need to let them know they need to come off mute again.
And you'll need to come off mute again.
I'm sorry about that. I was having a hard time getting off mute there. But yes, I approve, I vote to approve.
Great, thank you so much. So with that, all members present voted to approve Marlene as the temporary Chair, so I will hand it over to you, Marlene.
Okay, thank you. So call to order at 6:10. And who do we have here? We have Carl is here. And Brian, and me, and
I'll do a roll call real quick. Brian?
Here.
Carl?
Here.
Colton? I see you're online. Can you unmute?
Jacqueline is going to ask the board members at home to unmute. Once she does this, and you unmute, please stay unmuted the entire time. As we have blocked the ability for the general public to unmute themselves and interrupt the meeting. Thank you.
Colton just got off. You may try to get back on. Dawn Williams? You just got back on. We're doing roll call, Colton?
Sorry about that. I'm having really a lot of issues trying to unmute for some reason. I don't know if it's my phone, but it's telling me that I guess the whoever's running, it's not letting me unmute. I'm not sure if that's true, but I, I'm here.
Thank you.
Colton, just leave yourself unmuted the entire time. We disabled the feature for general public to be able to unmute themselves to avoid interruptions.
Oh, great. Sounds good.
Dawn?
Here.
Marlene?
Here.
Roger? Well, Mark is absent. Susan emailed that she was not going to be here tonight. Tina emailed that she was not going to be present. Jill?
Here.
Sarah?
Present.
Jacqueline? I'm here.
Is there any guest business? Don't think so.
Would you be interested in discussing, excusing the absence of the two people that did say they weren't going to be here, or do you want to leave them as unexcused?
Oh. Shall we excuse the people that forgot to say they couldn't be here?
Make a motion to excuse.
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
We will excuse the not present people.
Will it excuse us? It would be Susan and Tina.
Okay. And we have no guest business? Nope. So the next thing would be to approve the minutes of September 16th?
I make a motion to approve the minutes for September 13th.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
The minutes are approved as written. And now we have board rules of procedure from Jill.
Hello. So as you may recall, at your last meeting, we discussed changing the day of the week that the meeting is held on, and then the frequency of the meeting. That requires a board vote to approve any changes to the, the rules of procedure. So I've included those changes in the rules of procedure as well as some updates that are applicable because we are now our own Parks and Recreation Department rather than under Community Development. So the document would refer to the Community Development or the Planning Director and rather than the Parks Director. So we needed to update that as the department is now formed and it is formally called the Parks and Recreation Department. So those changes, and then also, as I was looking through here, it looked like there was a rule, at some point, I know that the Parks Board approved and reviewed permits. And that is something that the staff has taken the, the role of, and as far as development permits, that's handled through the Community Development Department, Public Works Department. So that was kind of a holdover from the, from the, the functions that were done in the past. And so I did update that language and just put in a description that the design guidelines, they're codified by the Development Code. And then the staff is the one that reviews the development permits. You still receive the site plans and the, and the planning of like a new park or redevelopment site, and those are presented to you. But in this case, the board wouldn't actually review like the set of plans and, and give approval. That would be done at a staff level. So I thought that would, that might need a little bit more explanation on. And then also, under the Park and Recreation Board, we have had seven members on it, and then we bumped it up to nine members when we took on some, we've had some attrition happening. And then we've also realized over the time that the, a nine-member board is, is a pretty large board. So the City Council's at seven, the Planning Commission's at seven, and so what we have put in there is just the language to say seven to nine. So that as natural attrition happens, we'll go to a seven-member board, and then we'll bring it back again for you to approve that. So at this point, you can have members from seven to nine on the board, and currently we have eight. So with that, I think those are the changes that are being suggested. I'll just make sure. And and then if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions. And then if Sarah has anything.
I'm seeing under quorum that it says at least five board members, and my only thought is if we are reducing, so we only have seven members, are we able to change the wording to be a majority?
I think we could, yeah.
Okay, just to help so that if we have four and we still have the majority, we still have a quorum for the meetings.
I'm sorry to finish that one earlier. So does anyone have any questions about the changes to the rules of procedure?
Have we formally now, we will meet on Mondays every other month?
Excuse me, yes, according to this, our our meetings will be every other month on the first second Monday of the month. Yeah, the second Monday. And that's back to how it was prior to the Wednesday change. So it'll go back to the way it was in the past. So our next meeting would be January 8th? And the January meeting has been held as a joint meeting with City Council, and that's what we anticipate happening this year. So if, if it is, then we have you come on the council night and they have their joint meeting. If not, then we would hold our normal park board and then do our, our council, our co-meeting with the City Council at their next opportunity and your next opportunity. But I think that's probably how it's going to go, is you're going to have a joint meeting with the City Council in, in January.
Yeah, I guess I need a clarification or understanding. There's nine members, but we're reducing it to seven?
Well, right now, the board's attendance are, for the board members is eight. Because we had it at nine, and we've had a person drop off a couple times, so we filled it and then it's come back again. So we think that moving forward, it would make sense to bring it back down to a seven-member board, when, just through natural attrition though. So we just want the flexibility in there to say from seven to nine, because the board rules of procedure say right now, nine, that we wanted to give the flexibility until we're at a seven member. We'll bring it back again to have your
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Moving on to discussion items, 2024 Comprehensive Plan Updates with Jill?
We do have this one down as an action item. So with the change that Sarah has suggested for the language under quorum being majority rather than at least five, did you want to approve it with change? Then you could make a motion to that. The, the rules of procedure are down as an action item tonight, so we would need to take a vote on that.
Okay, does everyone agree with the changes to the board rules and procedures that we've been presented?
You need a second?
We need a first.
We need a motion.
Not the first yet.
I'll make a motion to approve as written.
It's like second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
The board rules and procedures changes have been approved.
Great.
Now the discussion 2024 Comprehensive Plan Update with Jill?
Yes, so each year you have seen the, the proposed changes through the docketing process of the Comprehensive Plan. The Comprehensive Plan and the city consists of many chapters, and the different departments have input on, on those chapters. The Parks and Recreation Chapter is Chapter Five, that's the one that you see every year with any type of updates to changes in what the park offers, or as, as parks, you know, get developed, then they've come off of the capital project list. So that part of it is something that you're, you know, really familiar and you see quite frequently. But the city is embarking on a periodic update of the entire Comprehensive Plan. So there's many chapters, and the, the city's Planning and Community Development Department is taking the lead on updating the, the Comprehensive Plan for the city. With that, there has been some legislative adoptions, there's been some state level decisions that have been made. And so the city has comprehensively gone out with a consultant to identify areas of our Comprehensive Plan that need to be updated to remain consistent with the Growth Management Act and the other, you know, regulations that the city is under for different planning functions. So part of their, the consultant's work was identifying gap analysis of what our current plan reads, and then if there needs to be any changes to be, remain consistent with that, with the updated changes. So through their gap analysis, they have identified several goals and policies in the chapter that they would like to see some different, you know, language, and they've suggested or proposed to the city that those goals and policies, those changes would help us remain in compliance and with the, with the state guidelines. So with this Comprehensive Plan update, you'll see the usual changes. I think we updated the official name of the mill. The mill is a, is actually called the Mill on Lake Stevens, and we've always just had it as the mill, so we added the on Lake Stevens part of it as it's, that's its adopted formal name. And then we've updated, you know, some of the offerings like at Sunset Beach, and you'll see pretty small changes in, in the Comprehensive Plan, much like your yearly docketed, you know, updates. But then as it gets back to the goals and policies, you'll see more changes there. And, and I, we provided them in the packet, you can take a look at it. And those are based on some guidance that has been given from our, our consultant, and then also in response to some movement at the, at the state level. So before you tonight is, and just a discussion, we want to give you some time to, to take a look at it and to talk about it tonight. And then David Levitan with our Planning Department is also on as well, if you have questions on the larger project of updating the entire Comprehensive Plan. But we're just discussing and, and getting your feedback, if any, for the changes in the Comprehensive Plan, and then it'll come back to you. This is a plan that needs to be updated by the end of 2024, so it'll come back through next year for your approval. And then in the back of your mind, be thinking that in 25 will be a larger update, a more comprehensive update to Chapter Five for the Parks Department, and we do that every six years. So if I haven't completely confused you, or if I have confused you and you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
I have a question on the repair to the boat launch. Is that where we, where we are?
Do you mean in the cap, in the capital project list?
Well, no, in the, they were repaired by the dive team.
I think we can move that to
It's in the park update.
Yeah, we can move to that. We're in the Comprehensive Plan right now.
Okay.
So we can definitely come back to the boat ramp stuff.
Does anyone have any questions about any of the update? The exciting part, we get to move Sunset Beach off of the capital project list.
I've been by there a couple of times and it took a few pictures, and we just have, I think they have some railings to put in and a couple of tables and benches. It's really looking very nice.
Thank you.
When's the official completion supposed to be?
What's that? You're spoiling it. That's in the next thing that I but it is a change to the Comprehensive Plan in the sense that it's going to fall off of the capital project list. You'll see that there, it's crossed out in red.
They have a sign there, but it does not say when opening officially is.
So we'll go over that in the park update. Or the Comprehensive Plan, probably the largest changes are the removal of a project that was completed. And then you have two new goals that were added on at the end, five 12 and five 13, so that might be where you guys have any questions, if there are any.
And this is in response to, like I said, some, some movement at the state level, but also for climate adaptation and resiliency. And if no one has comments, or if they haven't, if no one has any questions, you can, you know, you, like I said, this will be brought back before you, but we thought that you know, we want to bring it as a discussion item just to
Does anybody have any questions or comments on this? Guess not. Should we move on to the Parks Update?
Sure, absolutely.
And that's also Jill.
So the Sunset Park Beach is complete. We have the ribbon cutting today at 1:30.
Oh.
And that was, the furniture will be delivered and installed in the coming weeks. But it is, it's, it's open to the public now, so.
Are they going to put some railings on parts of that walkway down?
You know, according to the plans, we don't have any railing scheduled for that.
One place that park staff did note that they're going to add a barrier of sorts is when you're walking down the pathway in the very first switchback, right there, they're going to be putting in a split rail fence. Because we noticed it does go off into kind of a steeper slope, and we want to make sure that everybody can see the path that ends there, and also get the barrier in case something was to be rolling that way. And then we do have signs up that we still have the tables and benches on order, so those are coming in. And then I believe there is one additional ladder that will need to be installed. There's supposed to be two, one on either side. And then we just have finishing touches like the enclosure where the restroom is, it needs to sit for a little bit, and then in spring is when we come in to do the first stain on that location. So staining the wood. But it's about there.
And the Eagle Ridge Design Consultants have been selected and staff's working on the contract right now. And the milestone of the 30% design is due in January, so we'll be bringing that to, to park board. And then we'll also be having an open house for the playground specifically. We want to wait until we know approximately how much size we have for the playground to see what types of elements and, and what that would look like. So we're at the very, very beginning stages, but we'll be bringing you some, some updates on that as that progresses. Frontier Heights Design is wrapping up, and the project, as you know, in Phase Two includes four pickleball courts, a synthetic multi-use field for sports, exercise stations, the sensory garden, and some parking improvements, as well as another gazebo in the park for, for a meeting spot. The city has updated the rules that we print on the signs. None of the rules in the code have changed, but what we print on the signs for users of the park to review, through time, different, different rules are, are needed as reminders, just based on usage and, and behavior in the park. And so we provided the, the new Parks Rules sign, and that's attached at the back. And you can take a look at that. It's, it's, there's no big surprises on that one or, or any, you know, large changes, but we want to get that so you could see it. And then of course, Winterfest is coming on December 2nd, and that's going to be from four to seven downtown.
Which is?
Winterfest. Yeah.
What's the date?
That's December 2nd from four to seven, and that'll be our, they'll light the tree and have some activities down here.
And the Letters to Santa, I'll be out of town, so I hate to miss that.
Yeah.
Four to seven, you said?
Yes. And that's all I have for the Parks Update.
Well, then we're down to board member reports. Anybody have something to tell us about things they've noticed or want to discuss?
I have nothing, everyone. This is Colton.
Thanks, Colton. We have no council representative.
Have a go back here real quick. So um. In the parks. So on page forty, we crossed out the pump track. For Centennial Woods, but then on page forty-two, it notes. A conceptual design with a pump track climbing wall in parking lots.
I'm sorry, what was the last part of that?
On on page forty, we crossed out the development, develop a master plan for Centennial Woods Park, including a pump track. And then in page forty-two, for planning project number ones for Centennial Woods includes the pump track.
We'll have to get that. And as you um, recall on the Centennial Woods project, unfortunately, we looked through feasibility. And we're just not able to put a pump track there. So I will. Update that. Thank you.
And what we'll want to do is make sure that we add pump track to the appropriate place because it is still our goal to find a location. And so I'll make notes of reviewing if it is located somewhere else and if not, we'll find a spot for it.
You guys see in the Herald that they just opened a pump track in Maryville?
Yeah.
Uh, we knew it was on the radar. Have you been?
Not yet.
It's at the uh Jennings Park.
Jennings Nature Park.
Yeah. It's adjacent to, oh, I'm sorry. It's adjacent to um, sixty-fourth. It's pretty close to um, uh, it's at the south end of the city.
Yeah, that's pretty close.
Anything else?
And if anything comes up too, as you're looking through this or something comes to you in the, in the middle of the night, you know. Don't hesitate to reach out, just to email me and and uh.
So I saw the cost on the Cedarwood went from one point eight million to four point three.
Correct.
Pretty significant. Um, and we're getting a one million federal local grant. Is there any plan for the rest of the funds?
So right now, the state has committed one point one two, three million. And then we have a federal asking for one million and we're seeking additional grant opportunities. Um, and in other opportunities with our our legislation, our legislative um. Uh, folks.
Did they ever decide what was going to be put in there? Is that still open?
So right now it is uh, this has partnered with YMCA to provide a community recreation. Um, center, most like otherwise in the area. So it'll be between eight and ten thousand square feet. And they have given us um, kind of their 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 space needs, but we haven't engaged an architect yet to really. To build it out, but how they envision it is classes, community classes and um. And then uh, recreation classes, exercise classes and um, and then you something for youth. Um, development. So we don't, we're we're working through the space of the site and and uh, the next step. Once we have um. You know, our scope done is to engage with an architect to get some plans and and work through that.
Was there going to be an indoor sports court or like a indoor basketball court or something in there?
Or was that? Well, currently there is a, it's not a regulation size. It's um. It's actually interesting, like on the plans that it was called a play shed. So there is a basketball court, it's concrete and there's a basketball court like striped out. It again, it's not regulation. But it's also a one-story building right now. So the idea is is to bring it into a full two stories. So I don't think a basketball court would fit with what they have in mind for it and what the community. Just because of the side, the space and the height that is required for a basketball court. But they have provided us with, um, they want community space in there and they want space for classes. Um, of different, a variety of different classes. Um, I can't remember all of the elements of the kitchen.
Yeah, they're gonna have a kitchen that can be used for learning, but also to support any like birthday parties or community meetings or items that are happening internally. Um, it sounded like if there is some kind of sport court, it might be like a half basketball court or part of. Their gym space that they're using for yoga. So they have um, their activity type center. They have their community meeting space center, the kitchen, uh, they need the office and the storage space, of course, which cannot be reduced if we go from a. Ten thousand building down to an eight thousand building, which is looking like it might be closer to the eight thousand square foot with the budget available. And then they have a welcoming area as well. So they like to have lobbies that are more of like your social place where everybody can gather as well. So those are the elements that have been proposed. We'll of course have to have a elevator in in order to get from story one to two. Will be unable to expand the footprint much larger than it is now. We will be able to bridge the space between the main building and the restroom. And we could extend the walls to about the overhang of the roof. But that is as large of a building as we can make. And so once we get into an engineering sign contract, we'll really be able to say. How is that space being designed and how many total square foot? Um, and certainly all those will be brought forward to the board as we start getting into the real details.
Well, thanks. And one other thing on page nineteen on Cavalero Community Park. Is that, is there like a plan to bring that into the city from the county?
Um, Cavalero was absolutely a partnership between the city and the county with the upgrades that were recently. Um, done in the last few years. Um, it is now within city limits. Um, I do know um, that the city one day has it on our radar. To take over parks that are within the city and it's also the county's goal, of course, to make that transition and they have it in. Uh, their goals as well. The question is really when? And it comes down to operation costs as well as staffing. Um, so I've put together a loose plan of what that would look like with staffing and money. Um, it just hasn't been able to be executed. We did in this year's budget receive, I asked for two full-time employees out in the field. We received one, which is going to be a park ranger. Um, so to bring us up to what I would consider full staffing today, we would have needed two. Uh, so we cannot continue to take on new locations as part of the five-year plan. I have also told council. And had the presentation that I I gave, um, that basically said as we continue to complete things like Frontier Park Phase Two. Um, as we continue to do the twentieth ballfield trail, this is the amount of FTE it's going to take in order to. Continue to keep up with our demands. They do have that plan for growth.
Is there any opportunity for the county to transfer funds for the maintenance of the park or is that totally off the table?
Uh, it would, I believe, be off the table completely. If I understand them correctly, those thirty years, they have the same FTE rate. Now that they used to. And so keeping up on these demands has been a huge stretch for the county.
Cause it says here that the site's poised to house a multi-sport complex and other organized sporting areas. Is there still a plan to have like a. Like an arena sports type building go in there or is that?
Their current preferred plan, when you go on to the county, does have those elements in it. The issue that Jill can speak much clearer on is the conservation future funds that were used to purchase and or develop that property. When you have conservation future funds, you are unable to have certain elements. And so those commercial buildings that they show upfront that was supposed to bring in revenue to support the park, those can't happen while there's conservation future dollars on there. As well as the BMX covered track that's on there because it would be gated and locked when not in use by the organization. That wouldn't be allowed on a conservation futures property. So we would have to convert the property and release the conservation funds dollar. Dollars and what I believe that looks like is today's value of the park, dollar for dollar. And then it would have to be voted on by the Conservation Future Board. And either the county or the city on the property today would have to pay it back and then use the money into another park. And so it would be very costly in order to make that conversion. Uh, so I think both the county and the city are faced with the future of this park. Either that has to occur money-wise or that master plan will have to be redone.
Um. Okay, and uh, is there a plan for the current dog park area once we move it to Twentieth Street?
Well, currently, I I think that's always the vision of the, you know, the city. The the mayor, you know, wanted to have the the park, the dog park down further on Twentieth, so it'd free up that space. To allow, uh, you know, maybe in more active use or he has um, some uh, different ideas for for recreation there. Um, ultimately, of course, it is the county's park. So although we will provide that and there's a great partnership with the with the county. At this point, you know, it's not on their immediate schedule timeline. So as ours is built. And folks start using it, we, there will be opportunity to to collaborate with the county and say, okay, you know, what's the next step for this? But at this point, until ours is built, they, you know, and that's under, so it's under a different jurisdictions um. Uh, use right now. So once, you know, ours is up and running, you know, we'll definitely approach them and talk about. You know, and then what is the future for for Cavalero, you know, like, like Sarah mentioned with the with the uh, master plan that's on there. That was adopted in fourteen. So is that still what, you know, the community needs? Analysis will will show on that site? Maybe it is and that's then, then they need to start, um, you know, building that. Um, and I'm sure they'll work with the city as they have in the past. They, you know, like I said, we have a longstanding collaboration and partnership with them. So um, yeah, I think that there's, there's definitely some changes to come there and there's some, some. Grant, laying the groundwork prior to that that will, that will occur. And I think that, yes, the the city's vision is that the dog park would. Would transfer over to the Twentieth Street property and then um, and then look at potential new uses at Cav.
Is the dog park and Twentieth Street trailer everything, is that? A funded capital project for twenty twenty four?
Correct. Yes. Yeah, and we are through um, our uh, the our design there. Kind of in the, in the middle of that, there was a realignment of twelfth street. That um, that now Public Works is looking at tying that into the project. But no, that is on the the calendar to go in twenty twenty four. Thank you. Yeah, you bet.
What's the acreage of the new dog park compared to the one we have now?
Ooh, I would have to pull the plans and take a look at that. I, I'm sorry, I don't have a good answer for that right now. And anything I said would be, I guess. So let me, let me get some info and I can bring it back for you.
Thank you.
You bet.
The reason I ask is at one point, it seemed like it was going to be dramatically smaller.
Hmm.
But it's been a while since we've really talked about it, so I'm just curious.
Yeah, I'll I'll find out for you.
Anything else someone wants to contribute?
Were we gonna hear from the, was, was the planning person going to say? Speak today or was that just for like city council, kind of like?
He came on, um, you know, because he's running the larger project of the comprehensive plan update of all of the chapters. Um, and so he was just here to answer any questions if you guys had any. And I think he dropped off now.
Yes.
They wait in the wings so that they can. In case you had a question about capital facilities or something or housing element.
Colton, Dawn, do you guys have anything for us?
I do not.
Neither do I. Thank you though.
Okay, so are we um, completed with our board member reports? Anything else? And um, no council report. There's nobody here from City Council. Do we have upcoming agenda items for us to suggest? Is that? Anybody have something they'd like to put on the agenda for next time in January? No, no. Okay, I guess we are going to adjourn. Well, seven.
You take a, um, you want to take a motion for the adjournment?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
All in favor of journeying?
Hi.
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 Okay, have a nice evenings.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.